It will, it will come to me, but not right at this point in time. I think it was the most important thing. So it should be actually. Okay, it was one of the different words. It will, it will come to me, but not right at this point in time. I know we want this. Make a presentation. Yeah. Are you doing the headlines or? That's not what I do. And I love to see you.
Spencer Rood. Yeah. She doesn't come to town much. Big town. All right. It's okay, just stay standing.
Person.
Stay, stay standing. All right, is the flag still up, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, needed as well with liberty and justice for all.
So, we did not need a lawyer here for this meeting, was that correct? He's on revision, okay. We're basically here to vote on the interlocal agreement between the city of Naperville and the city of Toledo. I don't know how it went last night, I had another meeting to go through, John, can you tell us a little bit what happened last night?
The council voted unanimously unanimously. Go forth with the contract. As well as in favor.
Okay.
Which I think they have.
We have a copy.
We have.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you meant so.
Okay. So is there? Any discussion?
Well, we need a motion.
Harvey?
Do we need a motion first?
Yes. First, or do we start with the motion?
We need a motion.
Start the motion. Make sure, make sure your mics are on, everybody.
Got it, thank you.
I'd actually like to start with a point of personal privilege and make a motion that we allow the council to talk and deliberate on this and then have a period of public comment. And then we can follow up with some more discussion before we make our vote. I want to make sure we have time to, to discuss this out, it sounds like there's some discussion that we had. So I'm making a motion that we have a period of public comment before we vote. And that the audience please let us do our evaluation and then, and then reserve your time for them.
I'll second it.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
It didn't really need to be. Did it, did it? Thank you.
I heard the motion.
Just a second.
I just thought we were here tonight to vote on this.
It's just a point of personal.
Eric, Eric, you heard this at last meeting.
I understand that, this is just a point of personal privilege to make sure that we allow Robert's rules to happen where we're not stepping on each other and we're allowing each of us to have a period to talk and that we don't have an interactive discussion going with the audience while we're trying to deliberate and make that deliberate. That kind of was a mess up that last time, which is why I did a little researching and, and making a motion. It shouldn't change anything other than we're just making sure we follow our limits.
Carrie, there's a motion, a fine has been started, pause if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion?
So when we left last week, there were three points for sure that we wanted to further discuss. And that was the vehicles. And rather than just giving up all three of them with no coming back to us for anything, we really settled on maybe often three years. And after they are in surplus, they would be returned to us. And there was a question about yearly bargaining. And we wanted a Toledo representative on the police commission that they operate under. That's what my notes have.
And Eric, you went to the meeting, was that discussed?
I went to the meeting, there was no discussion, they just had a motion, a second, and voted unanimously to pass the previous doc, the document in front of you.
The draft.
That we already could sell.
That we have, that we've already seen. I did after last meeting speak with our lawyer on the phone at length and was actually expecting a turn of the document, which didn't happen, so I was a little surprised that that that's what happened yesterday when I saw the, the minutes or the agenda for Naperville.
Okay, I was, I was very disappointed in the last meeting. I felt that there was absolutely no room for negotiation. It was a hard and fast no on everything that we asked for, other than the branding, which just meant they would have to replace what was already on the cars. I don't get a sense of community cooperation based on the fact that they gave us a final draft as our first draft. And if, let's say in the future, we're unhappy with their services, where, where are we gonna go from there? Because there are clauses covering.
Yeah, there are clauses in here.
Well, there are clauses covering it, but if they don't hear us in the first place, how are they hearing us from here on out?
Well, I, I brought with me, I just want to share, I've done a little bit of legwork and some research and, and some talking with community members and some law enforcement officers, retired and non-retired across law enforcement, those county sheriffs, city officers. And I, that's why I brought this with me. Because this RCW, which is made for cities with populations under what we have, I think we're at like, what, seven hundred and ten or a little over seven hundred? It gives us the opportunity to appoint an intermittent, an intermittent police chief for up to nine months. And with the possibility of an extension through the Criminal Justice Commission, I believe there is somebody out there that would be willing to do that. I talked with the mayor in Winlock and they are more than willing to come over here and help us out until we do that. Of course, it will cost us, you know, the, the time and the fuel for their people to come over if we need them to do that. And I think that if we were to look at our options, this is not our only one. At the contract of Naperville, it's not our only one. Growing up here for years as a child, there were many years, and I think anybody who lived here knows that we only ever had a police chief and a lot of reserves. I, my, my thought is we can well afford to pay a police chief with our budget and a small amount to reserve officers that could support that person until we come into our growth and some revenue two, three years down the road, whatever it takes to hire another officer. And I just want you to know that this is an option that was not presented to us. It is an option. Everyone that I talked to, community and these other officers, think this is not in our best interest. I think it's not in our best interest and our community members do not seem to be in favor of it. So that's, that is my.
I concur.
That's my contribution right now to the discussion. There, there is this option. We can appoint someone. It doesn't take six months to get their psyche bow. It'll take maybe a month, maybe three weeks. I mean, Logan had to have a new psyche valve to go from one position to another and he's already working over there. So either they're accepting the one he has until he's his final or they are just gonna let him get, get the new one. I mean, I think, I don't want to feel like we're in a trap door, I think we have another option. We just need to pay a chief, pay them well, support them, build a strong reserve, pay them for their time and their support out there. That's, that's what I have to say.
I would, I would concur with that. The thing about this draft with Naperville, it's, I mean, it's doable for the time being financially, but it's scary that when negotiations come up at the end of this year, that may not end up being something we can really afford in our, if we agree to this, we're already in it. So I definitely think looking at other options is wise. I mean, eligibility for ones under a thousand, towns under a thousand, it doesn't have that two-year training of a police officer.
No, it just says that they have to within nine months. Yes, complete the state requirement.
Exactly.
But, you know, you could find somebody to fill this and you have nine months still to put out and find another police chief. This person doesn't have to be that person. And, I mean, we have it within our budget to pay a police chief. And for years, we only ever had a police chief. I know that that brings up time off issues, but with reas, you, I believe that our police chief could take time off. They just don't need to make it known, I'm going on vacation. And if you have reserve officers that can go out on their own and do a little bit of patrol.
Should I move you up to the morning?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, well, I mean, I, we have our former police chief here who could, I mean.
He has a job though.
I know, but I think he could answer questions about, I don't know, I think the, I, I, the amount of uptick I've seen in the last, I don't know, week since we haven't had coverage is frightening. And if we're gonna have months of nothing waiting until we have hired somebody, I mean, I don't know what, how long it's gonna take, you know, how long did it take to hire Logan? It took a while, you know, and we were fortunate to have Sam to be there to, you know, in the interim. You know, I guess it's a fear of mine. It is nice to have the second option, I do agree. It is nice to have a second option. This is hard and fast. And there are, there, but there are outs here, you know, which can be to our advantage if, you know, we so choose, I think, so. I just urge caution as to just jumping off as soon as possible. I think that, you know, if you have questions about former policing and, you know, John, yeah, you had the.
Hold on, we haven't talked through the entire council yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Eric. You can continue or?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm still writing.
So I think I'm the only one that hasn't really said anything other than the status from yesterday. I'm not used to getting a contract and having absolutely no negotiation back on it. I'm a little concerned that making, you know, in my history, I've done some acquisitions and been a client. And I've seen that when a contract is made under duress with, with a party, it's very, very hard to have that. Even more so if the, if the, if the party in the position of power is not interested in negotiating. I'm also concerned that indirectly and unfortunately not on paper, which is what I was hoping that term would contain, is that we're supplying the amount of dollars that were asked for, but we're also supplying nineteen hundred dollars a month in vehicle debt and depreciation, which together add up to nineteen thousand one hundred a month initially, which if you look at our budget, that is right on the entire sum of money that we have that is just, you know, that as you divide up the police force, you don't get to take that entire budget because we still have point three five of a heads in the office that are being paid. We still have substantial insurance that we have to pay. So we, we have twenty four thousand dollars a month in the budget, but only nineteen thousand of it is, is relevant to what Naperville is taking. If that is what we're paying now, then when Naperville is done with the negotiating, I'll see that going up. And my concern is, does that keep us poor indefinitely and poorer every year? So I've gone from being the person pushing this deal to being on the fence. And that's why I think it's really important to listen to all of you. I'm not sure if, you know, it, I'm just not sure, I think Jamie, you said something about when they come back, you know, when it, when it comes back for renegotiation, that we've already seen what's gonna happen, because it's happening right now.
Exactly. If, if, if we are unhappy with the services we're being provided, who's gonna actually hear us? Because they're not hearing us now.
The only outs in this contract are in section thirteen and there aren't any. It's upon disacquisition of a city, I, either city's failure or default thirty days written notice. We breach the contract by failing to pay them or Naperville materially, materially fails to breach the contract with thirty days written notice. I mean, if you read section thirteen, those are your outs, that's it. There is no, there is no, I, I, I may have missed it, but I don't see a re-opener. I know I saw one at one time, but for some reason I'm not seeing another re-opener in here anywhere. And our only out here is in section thirteen and those are not very great outs. There are not any reopeners to this contract that I see, and I thought I saw one before, but I did, but I, but I'm not finding it. So if somebody finds it, that'd be great. But our only out that I can see real out, other than an opener for negotiation, is the duration in section thirteen and those are not great out options. I mean, we could choose to just not pay them. That's an out. I'm just saying, those are our only outs. There are not any great options to have.
And the other thing is, we presented things that we would be interested in changing. And the council, Naperville Council was not here at the last meeting. Well, the mayor pro tem and the chief of police was. And our desires were not related to the council because Eric was at the meeting and it was not presented before the vote. So to me, it behooves the chief of police to bring up our request at the meeting before the vote and that didn't happen.
Would we like to release comments from the public? Or are we, are we at a point where, because we'll do that and then I think we'll, we'll have a motion that will.
Sure, I'm good.
Emily?
Yeah, go for it.
Hand it over, please. And order the mayor to.
Go ahead. Yeah.
So I would also like to offer that another option for you is to redline the, the contract that you have. It actually presents an alternative to that contract.
Sure.
Okay. First off, I'd like to say, she likes to comment about other options, I think that pointed that out at the beginning of all this, that there were other options, this isn't your only option. What she said is fairly true, you can opt to start your own place firm again. Absolutely do a role here, if that's what you guys wanna do. As far as if you're only ever being a police chief, I've been here a long time, it's always been too bad, police chief. There hasn't been a pass for it. So that's, so yes, you're right, there are other options, there's other things you can do. You can get your PD back to go on, you can contract with the county and contract with other cities, there's all sorts of options, it's not. I don't want you to feel that this is your own option because I thought I made that pretty clear. Just so you know. So, don't feel like you have to. Second off, as far as the last meeting, you had questions, I answered your questions. See attorney. Basically, you see in Naperville, a copy of your questions that are already been answered, they didn't come in form of this is what we want on the contract, it was simply questions that were. That's probably why, I know it's a fact, why nothing has changed on the contract. Because one presented in a way that this is what Toledo wanted us to change.
So, so what I hear you saying is Naperville would be open to actually negotiating this contract with us? To actually negotiating it?
They wouldn't be open to that, but they, they weren't presented with that, they were presented with questions that I had already previously answered. And it was not sent to them in a form of, hey, we want to change this stuff on the contract was what, you know, these are questions.
I was, I was expecting a turn from our lawyer. When, when I got off the phone, I was, I was expecting, we spoke about the cars being returned to us and not having the option for Naperville to keep them, that, that they would operate on Naperville's rotation schedule and that when our twenty-one vehicles were surplus at, it sounds like three years, they're running the same cycle, then we would expect to get them back to help defray some of the cost on these cars that we still hold in chance of that one.
And, and, sorry, go ahead.
There were a couple of other things I, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I know this makes me old and I know you've been here for a long time, but we really did only have one chief and I could give you, I mean, who did?
Oh, maybe.
And, and it, and we lived for a long period of time. I don't, there you go. And Bird at one time was the, and yeah, and Bird at one time was the only officer we had. Yeah, before Scott and his, yeah. And wasn't Scott a reserve, Hockway?
No.
Was he?
But additionally, Eric presented our list of concerns to you and everything on that list, you said no, no, no. Now, did they empower you to negotiate? Because your answer was no to everything that we had concerns over. To me, concerns, demands, whatever.
I think my answer was no, I need you to explain why it worked that way.
Um, I heard no. I heard a lot of that.
I heard no too. I heard no too. I mean, you gave an explanation of why it was that way, but there was, but, but I'm going to say it this way. It felt like there is no negotiating and that was maybe inferred. I, I mean, our, our taken, that's how I read it. Like, well, no, they're not gonna do this and no, they're not gonna do that and this is why and this is why and this is why. So basically, this is this and that's the way it is. Does that make sense? That's how it came to be. And apparently it wasn't, I wasn't the only one. Whether that was how you meant it, that's how.
That wasn't my intention. It came across, I believe.
I mean.
Sorry.
No, don't, don't apologize, I'm just saying.
I haven't answered the questions that were presented. But I know for a fact that the reason that that wasn't changed is because of that this has changed.
Well, generally, when you, this is in my experience and, you know, generally when you are negotiating a contract, you don't submit the first copy to the person that you're going, or to the whatever that you're going to have the comp, that you're, that you're, that you're entering into a contract with and put final draft on top of every page. Because it's a proposal and it. Because it's a proposal, and it never says in pro, proposal anywhere. It just says final draft. Which leads us then to believe this is our option. Does that make sense? Usually, it's presented as a proposal, and it says so right on the front page. This does not say proposal. It says final draft. So that, and that's, I mean, I've done negoti, contract negotiate, union contract negotiations for twenty plus years. Never have I ever seen a first con, a first proposal come with final draft across the front of it, and no, this is a proposal.
Huh? No, it's right here, and this, this is misleading.
Did we get this from the lawyer? I'm just saying.
No, to answer your question, that is the final draft as far as he was concerned, as far as we're concerned, that. You guys, it was never presented that he wanted change. You see what I'm saying?
This, we were never, that's why we had to call this meeting, because we did want changes, and.
The only one we got presented to us had the final draft.
I'm not, before the meeting took place last time. We're not blaming you specifically. I'm just stating.
Another one with proposal on it, and we'll be different, so.
Well, maybe not, maybe not. I'm just saying, generally, when you're negotiating a contract with, with it, you get a proposal. You don't get, I mean, maybe this was his final draft, great, but. You know, it doesn't read like that as a proposal. It reads like this is your, here you go. This is what we're doing. Thank you.
Eric, the three points we wanted to further discuss, that you did buy. You did discuss, the attorney knew these points.
I did. We discussed duration of the entire contract. We discussed vehicle return.
Yeah, we, but he asked for three years. Where, as far as a rebuttal to Napa Vine. He knew of them, but they, because it wasn't formally in front of us. Yep.
But also, you gotta think about, the chief did answer your question on three years or five years, Jamie. He said he wants a five years so he could train the officers longer and transition to cover both cities.
I get that.
Five years, not the three year, because the three year wasn't long enough.
But there was no negotiation.
He said that at the last meeting.
He could have said four. That's negotiating.
He explained to you why he wanted five, and the council heard all that. Well, just like I was sitting there, heard the same thing.
Well, that doesn't mean I was happy with it.
Well, no, you got a right to vote with her where you want. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to change your vote. I'm just saying, he answered the question last meeting. And you guys are saying you didn't answer any of it.
But he did.
He did.
He said that.
He said, and he also, he also advised on the vehicles to sell the oldest one. Put that money back in our coffin and lower the rates or lower whatever we owe on them, and take those other two cars and use them. Within the contract that he wrote out, or whoever wrote this up, said that forty-eight months of it, we fell through, we got the cars back. Am I right?
He did say that's what he would like, but that's not what I think the majority of us would have liked, because I thought.
But that was his answer to your question.
It was his answer. There we go. That's exactly what we're talking about. It was an answer. That's his answer to the question, but that doesn't, that's not a negotiation.
Okay, well, to go back, to go back.
I'm just saying.
Let me talk for a second. To go back to the Winlock Toledo combination, okay? We had fifty thousand dollar savings to each town. We had six officers instead of two for each town. We had better coverage. The crime rate went down tremendously. In each town. And now, they wanna come to help us out, and you guys are shooting them out of the saddle.
Wow, I don't.
Because we'll have more protection. You know how hard it was to find Logan? Very hard. You know how hard it's gonna be to find the chief? Even harder. There's nobody out there, wages are up, we're getting bought out from other big cities with twenty thousand dollar bonus fees. That are attached to, who are we gonna get? We're gonna get the bottom of the barrel. And the bottom of the barrel is not necessarily what you guys want. And we have a chief. That's handpicked other officers that are ready to come in and do the job. We don't have to worry about it anymore for years and years to come. Whenever we retire, they'll still be here with, with Troy. And possibly other cities come in and join us. I don't know if that's what we're gonna happen, but I'm just saying with Winlock and Toledo. We have it in black and white. We have it on paper, a wall of savings. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, a wall of saves. Winlock and Toledo, when we had that going, we saved so much money and had so much protection. Eric, I'm not done, please.
You're repeating yourself, sir.
Okay, let me repeat myself, I'm old. All right. We had better protection, we saved money, and everything went hunky-dory until the mayor caboshed it over in Winlock. That one's up.
We have some other people that have raised their hands that haven't spoken that's.
Go ahead.
So are you telling me you're gonna save money by going to Napa Vine right now? Is that what you're telling me in this conversation? That you're just saying, you're gonna save money by letting Napa Vine be our police?
It worked before.
We're not going.
No, I'm asking you right now, in this contract, that if they agree and they sign it, are you saving money?
I don't know the answer to that. I haven't punched the numbers.
No.
So you are not saving money?
No, because it's our entire budget.
As the towns person and talking to the people in Winlock. They would not be in agreement with your statement. They would not say that crime was down, and they would not say that coverage was better when they were combined. I do not delay this with me for our community, and I know there are a lot of people in town that feel the same. Now, had you as mayor or whatever made this discussion, this group. More public knowledge, I'm sure there would be a lot more people here. Because there are a lot of people in this town that think this is the worst idea that you could ever come up with. I would rather have one chief than have all of my cops thirteen miles down the road. I would rather have one chief that was loyal to here than ten down the road that are loyal to there. That's what I would rather have, and there's a bunch of people in this town that feel the same way. And that's what you should be concerned about, how we feel, not how you feel, or not how, how, it's not, I, it's not even about fifty thousand dollars. Even if it was gonna save you fifty thousand dollars, it's about how your community members feel. This is the worst idea I have ever heard of in my entire life. My entire life. I cannot even believe, there's a problem here. Yeah, I agree. We all know it. You don't lose your city manager, your police chief. Your next police chief and your officer in a matter of six months, unless there's a problem, and don't tell me it's money. Because if Rock Mueller wants to stick him here alive, he can, but he could have left here for years and made more money someplace else. For years, he could have went to Shifelis, Napa Vine, anywhere, and he was here. There's something else going on, and I'm not involved in it. I don't know what it is, but this is awful. And this is an awful idea. And by apartment where, where everybody has went, it's who you wanna partner with. That doesn't seem very secure. That's which emergency is gonna come first? Napa Vine's emergency or Toledo's? Do I have forty minutes to wait for a cop to get here? I'm sure the hell, hope so.
Bye, you had something?
Well, as business owner, I have a couple of opinions of my own. Um, first of all, did anybody ask Sam if he wanted to stay? When he resigned, did they ask him to stay? Did they offer him a raise Tuesday?
We had no money to give him a raise.
How could you not have money?
We don't have any money. Right? I don't run the books. Ask her, she runs the books.
If you lost a chief and two officers and a reserve, you're telling me you have no money?
The reserve was volunteer. There was no payment to the reserve. Randy Pennington worked all these years for nothing.
Yeah.
Well, I know that. I didn't tell him to jump ship. I don't know what the problem is. I don't know.
Randy can't work under, if it's not a chief.
Randy can't work. I can't have, I can't have, have any substitutes without a chief.
But if we've lost, like Laurie said, if we've lost the chief of police, done, then we lost, let's say we lost Logan. Sam, Sam's the only one left. Why couldn't Sam take some of that salary? That we're willing to offer at least one chief of police now, where can that money come from to give Sam that position? Because I mean, Sam, I mean, he was a, a sergeant, I believe, and then he got promoted to chief of police, and then that was just ripped away from him. How was he supposed to feel?
He quit.
But it, but it's presented to him in this fashion. Here, be the police, the chief of police, but I'm negotiating this contract with Napa Vine, and then you'll go back to sergeant.
He was actually for it.
Well, maybe you think he was for it, but I don't think.
He said.
He was for it. He said, I'll be willing to step down if we make this merger.
And that was.
But we do have a budget that would allow for us to pay a chief a decent salary.
Should do. But again, as a business owner, this is my concern. I run a business down here. Ray, for instance, is closing by herself, what, three weeks ago. The back gate's open because we're taking out trash. Somebody walks in our back gate, she's standing there counting money. If something were to happen to her, and we have no police department, how long can somebody can get her? They're coming from Napa Vine now. As a business owner, it's kind of concerning to me, thinking I don't have police protection. Now Logan, I love Logan, he's a great guy. Like, he told me when he left here, he promised me that he would be back here, and he would still patrol our area. I haven't seen him once since he left.
He has been.
I haven't seen him, and he comes to my place all the time, and I haven't seen him.
I'm not saying he hasn't, so. I just think it's important that you know how the community feels, and I think before you make a vote or make a decision, you should make a better public. Notice for people so that the people enter, I don't care if you, if you want me to vote, not door to door. And let people know you're gonna have a meeting, I'm happy to do it, but I think you should hear what the people in your town have to say about your. Decision. We're the ones who are going to suffer.
Yeah, I just wanna speak to one point. In the very beginning, we were told about the coverage. And you're saying however long to get from Napa Vine to here. What, initially, what we heard was the combination of six officers. On a rotating schedule would always be on the move between Toledo and Napa Vine. It would never be a response time. Longer than already it takes for the person, if it's at night, to get woken up, get dressed. Get in, pick up a car, get their computers running. I mean, that takes a certain amount of time. The response time would never be longer than that, because these officers and the coverage that.
Would the response time always be that? Because during the day, they're in Napa Vine, when during the day without a police.
They're not, that is not.
And I don't believe they were always going to be in route back and forth.
No, but there would always be someone.
Kathy, you're taking out one cog of this wheel.
I am, but.
Is that the sheriff department also responds? My neighbor was. He's up there, down there, or somewhere, he's, he was a drug dealer, okay? When Randy was there making a bust, the sheriff come around the corner, and a state patrol would come around this corner, within a matter of minutes. So he's, we're not relying, we are relying on our own forces. I understand that to be here, somebody be in town, patrolling, blah, blah, blah. You also gotta think, there's other people out there listening that are jumping in to help immediately, if not sooner. Cause I saw it right next door to my house, and that's been a few years ago, but it's still, whenever I hear a call, I see somebody around town with, with a stop. Pretty soon, I see a second car pull up. It's not very long to, to have that happen, but. It can be everywhere. I know that. Go ahead.
Um, just to clarify, Sheriff Snatsa was at an original Napa Vine meeting that. I believe a couple of council members also attended. Um, he was very specific, saying that the sheriff's office is very, very thin. It's stretched very thin, and without any sort of police coverage in Toledo, he would have to make hard choices. And what types of calls he would be coming out on.
It would have to be very active and very important.
So I just wanna make sure that information is out there as well.
That's kind of what we got now with Chief Brockmire, having our back on nine-one-one calls. Any other patrol car or patrolling was, we don't have. Any nine-one-ones, I don't know how many responded. He said it was low count last month, eight or nine calls, but he helped out here in Toledo. But. But I'm going back again to hiring somebody. People are, they're not out there to hire, so I don't know where we're gonna find somebody to hire to come to this town and to help us. When you got a police chief that's been here for twenty years, or however many years it's been, he's not gonna let us falter. He's not gonna give us people that won't come here and help, and.
So there's been no interest, no interest. You haven't talked to anybody that could fill this void or take over. Um, as an interim chief, nobody that is in this area that comes qualified. Nobody's reached out to you for that?
No.
Okay. Have you even looked, because you already were sold on doing this? Have you even attempted to find it? Or you just said to focus right on this, on jumping ship? Then you knew all these guys were going or went.
I didn't know all these guys were going. How would I know that? I get the reservation paper on my desk, that's all I got.
I mean, it sounds like jumping ship with Napa Vine's been in the works for quite a while.
It hasn't been in the works. All I'm using is Winlock and us as an example, for what Napa Vine's trying to do with us and, and Napa Vine. That's all I'm doing.
Jill, do you have something to share? I see you over there shaking your head.
I, I, sure, I don't wanna.
No, do.
We did have somebody interested in taking over.
Thank you very much.
We had Dwayne.
That you called, you talked to.
Dwayne Lawrence?
And Ray Lawrence from the tribe.
And I put him in charge of the chief.
Yes, but he did call initially to say he was willing to help us out until we have a contract settled. And you didn't share it up with.
No, it was not shared, but it is, but he comes highly recommended from Randy Pennington and his resume.
Randy's the one who called me.
Okay.
Randy Pennington called me and asked me to check this guy out, and I said I knew him because of previous help. He's helped us in the parades. He's helped, he's a very nice, likable guy. I said, well, here, here's the chief's number. I gave him the chief's personal number to call the chief and see if we can work something out.
Whose job is it to fill the chief's spot?
Who's job?
Yeah, are you, are you not the person that should have, that should have gone to, gone to him and said, hey, we need an interim chief? Is that not your place?
Is this, is this?
I'm asking a question. I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking. Just so you know, I'm asking. Is it Sam's job, or was it your job?
I guess it's the council's job, because whatever I say don't mean squat anyway.
Well, that's not true.
Yes, it is.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
Well, I think it is.
I just think.
From walking out of here and quit.
I just think that we all.
The best thing for you, Sharon, just let me.
See, that's not at all it, but.
Yeah, it is, because that's what's coming about here. Everybody's out to hang me now.
No, I just think that everybody, I just think that this council is not a rubber stamp council. And that we are willing to go forward and find our own information, talk to our community members, and make our own decisions. And that we are not going to just make a decision based on what we're told, because that's not the type of people that we are. Because we also, like you, very much care about our community and our responsibility. And so, all we're trying to do is find out what our true options are before we just move forward in a decision. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. That's our job. It is, and not meant in no way. I'm asking you a question. And I apologize if you feel be, like you're being thrown under the bus by that question.
She just did.
Okay, well, I'm asking you a question.
Jill.
She shared in.
You just did.
I'm here to make sure things are done properly and legally and honestly. And you just sat there and lied to the public and the council, said you had no other options.
Also, now I'm a liar too, on top of that. Thanks, Jill.
I'm sorry, I'm, you know, but I'm just trying to say, you flat out said no, you had, when she asked you, you said.
Okay, so I forgot about him. Okay, I put him under the chief, hoping the chief would hire him, and then maybe we could get him into our system. I don't know. Because it worked before with Winlock. I would not throw Toledo under the bus for anything. I love this town. What do you think I'm here for?
But you referred him to.
The chief.
Mueller, who is Napa Vine's chief, not our chief.
No, I think he said, he, he referred him to Sam. Sorry. He said he referred him to Sam. I'm sorry, he did say that. He did say referring to Sam, but, but he's out there. He did say referring to Sam, but, but he's out there and he's an option and it wasn't shared with any of us. Nobody said a word that we had another, that that was a viable option. Nobody mentioned that we could, that we could have an intermittent chief until we could find one. We, that's stuff that I, that I had to go out and, and figure out on my own just by talking to the public and law enforcement officers that I know, asking their opinion about this agreement and what they feel is the best interest for our city and talking to community members and that, I mean, it wasn't shared and I feel like it should have been shared that they, we have another option. This isn't it. That's all I'm saying and perception is huge. Public perception is huge. And the perception, Steve, maybe it did work really great. I'm not saying on paper that it just isn't amazing and that it doesn't work, but what I'm saying is public perception is the public, the community in town did not like it and they do not want it again.
Do you think I liked it?
I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't know.
I lost four members. I lost four members. Boom, like that.
Well, I get.
Did I plan that? No.
I, I'm just.
But we have to work within our means and say, now, now what do we do?
But without doing this and giving them all of our two hundred and eighty thousand about dollar budget, is that correct? Two hundred and eighty-eight, without giving them our entire budget and all our vehicles, that's enough money to pay a police chief very well and pay reserves for their time. Do you disagree? I don't. I think there's money there for that. I, I really do.
When Logan, and we were surprised, our last police officer read his last two week resignation and it was less than two weeks from the time he read it to the council. At that point, there was always already the news of a possible connection with Naperville. And that's where we have now put our energy. Tonight was to talk about the final points that we wanted to rebut and keep negotiating. But in the meantime, now maybe we do have another and without doing any name calling, what we need to look at is do we want to offer a reply to this document from Naperville? Or do we want to put a pause on it and do something different? It seems like maybe that's the time to ask.
Well, I would, then I would make a motion then that we do not move forward with this contract with Naperville and that we move forward in trying to find an intermittent chief that can take over the space.
We have to vote on the motion that's on the floor that we're discussing right now.
We don't have one.
We had a motion, it was a second one and we, we are still discussing that motion.
Can you reread that?
What's the motion saying?
We voted already and not another motion was made.
Yeah, the motion for the point of personal privilege to talk about it and then that one was.
And I believe we heard from the public. The oldest, youngest member of the community, would you like to?
I'm, okay, I'm just here to listen.
And I'm just here to listen.
Was.
Is there another motion?
No, so I was just making sure that we.
So that motion has done.
There isn't one.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Jill?
You're in a sucky position. You've got to embrace the suck, you've got to do something. The way I see it, you're going to have to build a relationship with Naperville. I also think Winlock should be involved in that, but that's my personal opinion. Because these, all three of these cities are growing exponentially. Steve, the councils are proud of these sides. A don't have the experience, that B don't have the background, it's terrible. So it's just going to explode. So before you become your own police department again, which you probably should in five, six, seven years, whatever, you're going to have to work together. This is why I pushed so hard for the Chamber of Commerce to come to town again to try and help these situations that you can't spend money, you don't have students and you don't get money unless you have businesses. So the businesses are coming slowly. They're usually the last ones to arrive after the people get here. Like I said, this is my third round of this in my life. So you're in a tough spot, spending, there's no way around it. Saying I'm going to quit or walk out, that doesn't solve the problem though. John's been here a long time. I think he's a trustworthy guy. I don't think he's out there to take advantage of the city. Yep, your response time's going to get slower, but like you said, when that call comes in, he is not the only one responding. You got the sheriff's department, you got the state and let's face it, that's all political reality from befund policing. People don't want to be police officers. I've asked my relatives if they were going to be the police chief, they're like, absolutely not. They're all thinking about leaving the police force. And that's from Minnesota. So it's everywhere across the country. These are not issues that are easy to solve, but yet outside it's not going to solve it. There's a way to figure it out, to work itself out, but.
Thank you, Jill. I, I, oh, I'll respond if I'm. I think that we've made it clear to the chief that if, if it were anybody else, if this were random police chief from somewhere that we didn't know, this would not have been on the table. I think it's a matter of affordability now and, and more so affordability in year two and three. We are definitely growing. At some point, we're going to have the budget, but, but, but my concern is we're going to be so strapped for and, 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 okay, my biggest concern, and here's what transitions me from a hard yes to a hard made one. The rest of the council is in where they are, you can tell. But the other is what happens in year two when this, when this mountain goes up by an amount that we cannot cover and that we've already tightened the belt? What happens is, based on the negotiation I've seen, is the coverage gets reduced. The dollar price stays the same and the coverage gets reduced. That's a terrible, terrible cycle. And that, that will affect, businesses won't be coming here, the people won't be wanting to build here and we will spin down the drain. So this, this is the most important council meeting I think that the city's had in a long time and I.
I approve.
And yeah.
Just saying. Threatening to walk out or yelling.
Oh, absolutely.
If someone starts yelling at someone else, the beers come off. It's going to be.
You covered, you covered my point. It, it really does boil down to what happens in January when collective bargaining happens and the range in that document is anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent with no commitment to any, any number. And so the reality is, is that you need to plan for thirty percent and the reality is, is you don't have it.
Dom?
So I, I've not said anything for a while. I mean, I've had my business here for five years now and I haven't probably said anything because I'm not a Toledo community person, but I do own a business here. And so I guess my first question would be, and forgive me if I don't know the answer to this, but I'm going to just answer, and ask the question. If I call nine one one and I need help, how does that respond? Where does that response go to?
To the hills.
Goes to Shana's and what happens from there?
Dispatch, send the dispatches, whoever, the unit of jurisdiction that it's in, it's, so it's Toledo, get Toledo officer to respond.
So how does that work? We don't have a Toledo officer here. What happens then? So if there is no Toledo officer, what happens?
Now, currently, currently we respond at that point.
So, and maybe I've been spoiled the last five years. I have John's personal cell phone, I have Logan's number, I have Sam's number. So it's always been very convenient for me if I've got a bum sleeping across the street. I first call the morgans and say, just want to let you know that the guy's sleeping on the bench. I call John or somebody and say, and they cannot take care of it. But to be honest with you, I'm not going to call nine one one until there's a bum sleeping on the bench across the street. Well, you know what, Sam, I'm not going to call police. I would call John because he's right down the street, you know? So it makes it, it's made it convenient. So it's been wonderful having these guys here, so for not to have that, I guess I want to say friendship because it's like a friendship because we've all loved these guys. They've taken very, almost tears me up with Sam and then left. It's, I'm sorry. It's hard because you interviewed a lot of these people and take care of you and take care of your business and just to let them go just like that is hard to do. So as a community member or a community business, what can we do to help Toledo get more money, to help pay more money to these police officers? That would be my question. What can we do to bring more business into us? I mean, I'm leaving, I'm selling my business. That's why I said, Sam, if you're out of here in so long, if I'm not going to have police protection, I don't want to be here. That's my biggest concern and that's through nobody's fault of anybody's, but as John's believing us in the first place.
There we go. You started the whole, I'm like, John.
But.
I'll tell you.
It's kind of like, okay, for instance, as a, as a business owner, I can tell you what pisses me off is when I got a pizza truck sitting over there in a parking lot that I sell pizza in my business and it's taking my business from me. How much money are you really making off of a pizza truck that's from another town? And now since I'm in a blank parking lot of Friday and Saturdays and sells pizza and taking my business that I support this town and they don't. So that irritates me and take it over whatever you will, but as a business owner, I want the cities, I want you guys to be in for me, not for people from Morton. I want you to be about me because I'm about you. And I've done a heck of a lot here in this town and I feel like I pay a lot of taxes, I pay a huge frickin' water bill. But I'm also willing to help out and say, what can we do? I do a hell of a lot of fundraisers. If we got to do a fundraiser, let's raise some money. We just need to help you guys out.
The problem is you bought, you bought every single pie at the, that's the problem.
Steve, help me. But, you know, what can this, what can the community do to help us? I don't know how it works. So if you tell me, is there anything that we could do to help to raise money in this town?
Well, I think it's about sustainability. You can do a fundraiser to plug the hole now. The point, the point is, is that that's only, that's only a band-aid. And so there's some, there are, change is coming, growth is coming. I mean, we have, we have a development, you know, proposal underway, but we're a ways away from that. I mean, we have a problem right now.
So if I was going to move into this community, I'm going to buy a new home here. My first question to you, because my son wants to replace part of Las Vegas. So my first thing that he does, he looks up online and says, where is the best place to live in the city? So as me moving to a new city, that's what I'm going to look for too. Where is my police department? What kind of coverage do I have? What's the crime rate here in this town? Aren't new people going to think of that?
Does Morton cover PL? That is in the works.
Geez Louise.
That's a very exciting scenario.
A Morton covering PL, I'd be curious how that's going to work. We're talking ten miles, they're talking.
Yeah, that's a distance.
I just need to say again that it, that it comes around to this, the contract presented to you from Naperville does not pencil. It just doesn't. You can't afford it. You can't afford it. So if it were me, I would be going through and saying, what is it that you can't afford as a counter offer to Naperville? And allow Naperville to respond. And explore your other options while, while that hap, while that happens. I mean, if you have a, you have a potential candidate that's interested, it would, it would be your, you share your responsibility to pursue that if that, if that individual has expressed an interest.
At least explore it.
At, at least, at least have, yes, at least explore.
Can we though continue to ask Naperville with a rebuttal with some points to, to continue negotiating with us? And at the same time.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know.
Probably not.
I don't know if Chief Brockmire was here or.
Right, that's not.
That's not negotiating in good faith.
It isn't negotiating in good faith. Exactly. So it doesn't pencil, but do we continue with some kind of a response and see if some things are going to be adjusted? If we just quit now?
Well.
I guess that's an option. Do we, I mean, we can just quit this.
Or we're going to attempt to pause this.
We can pause.
And it may or may not be available when we come back to it.
Will you say that in the first place?
I'm sorry, I was telling Kathy that while we can't negotiate two things at the same time, we could opt to pause this, understanding that it may or may not be available when we get back to it.
John?
Okay, so I hear what you guys are destroying. So first off, you, you can, you can explore the other option of Dwayne, well, early Lawrence, very good man, very nice man. I think he is qualified for that position. It's going to take a little bit of time. He lives in Idaho, I know. He lives in Idaho and he's not willing to move here. So you're going to have a situation where you have one guy who wants to work four days a week and then you have no luck. At least three days. But that's a situation I know of him now.
I disagree with that. I think he is actually willing to move here.
You can explore that. What I'm saying is you can explore that. You can still continue to talk to Naperville or whoever you wish to talk to. You don't have to nail yourself down to this if you don't feel comfortable. Do whatever you think is best for the city of Toledo and I totally respect that. That's what I would ask for the people here. But you guys do what you think is right for the city and the people and that's why I don't. I love this city and I would never have any bad happen here or try to have something bad happen. You guys nail it down however you think is best for the citizens of Toledo and the city. No hard feelings are in on that, so you guys, you guys do, you guys do what you need to do.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I, I feel badly that this is, this negotiation with Winlock, the proposal.
Naperville.
Naperville.
I know, the last one was Winlock.
With Naperville has gotten a bad color on it, a bad taste in citizens' mouths before they really knew that we hadn't even given a response and that we wanted to further negotiate.
I think us, and we have more of these things coming with regard to the growth, the changes we're going to be making, the planning and permitting. We need to have community meetings. We should have called a community meeting.
See that now.
Not just post on the website and post on the bulletin board. It should go out through social media. Honestly, we should get Randy Devine, put it up there and say, we are calling everybody to come, we're at the high school.
That's what you need to do.
Around.
The town.
I would also like to add that this, this whole concept that we thought about. I truly believe in this concept. It does work very, very well. So I, I truly believe that this is a good thing for both cities, not just one. Personally, knowing how, you know, working with the police department on here, you're never going to be able to afford six officers, which is what you're coming up with. Something like this, whether it be with Naperville or with some other. And Toledo, the problem is you just don't have the tax base to keep up with the rising cost of policing. That's really what's happening. So this is just an option to help with that. You're going to have problems.
I wonder if, I've been talking to people like you have as well, Shelley, and, and one of the things that was discussed is, is sharing the overhead portion of the policing with, you know, in a central location. And I'm wondering if, long-term, if that's what works for the South Louis County where, where. And I'm wondering if, long-term, if that's what works for the South Louis County where, where each town has an officer who's based, you know, out of this desk here, but part of the larger organization or two. And that, and that, you know, your response time is lower, but that the, the overhead, which I think turns out to be twenty-five percent is shared, right? And so then you could see a cost statement says, if you take a twenty-five percent of your budget times four and you only need half that, then you're returning, you're returning money. And whether we spend that on enhanced pay for the officers that we can acquire and retain them. But that, you know, maybe, you know, uh, uh, I know that all of us, you know, I know you're in the same position we're in because your city's huge. I mean, it's huge, your, your two freeway presences each are the size of Toledo.
John, John.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, we're fortunate to be in, I like that, so we have a pretty good budget.
Yes, but you also have that tax base that the freeway has.
Also, John, didn't you also say that the overtime would be none?
There'd be no overtime.
That's what we had to, this is what we just had to write a check for. Sam, on overtime? We had to pay Logan, who's only been here for three months, how much was that check? Three or four thousand dollars for overtime for him? We're already having to pay overtime. So the overtime, I forgot to mention, was included in John's speech before too, that there will be no overtime. With that many officers on the road, you don't need to pay overtime because you got so many in the car at all times. Am I right or wrong, John?
That's basically right, only on special occasions would that happen.
So South County, you're talking about EMS. I'm assuming when you say that, South County EMS, just because I have some experience with that, I was on the fire department for a long time. While we had South County EMS as the ENT, my family has been involved with that as volunteers and commissioners. South County EMS does do overhead for South County, but only for paramedic services. Each fire department does their own overhead paperwork for their department, so they each still have a department secretary or two and a chief. So they're still paying fees for that within your fire district. The only thing that they pay together that they contribute to South County EMS for is medic services. And that is very quickly falling apart. It is falling apart. And Donna Manan is a volunteer now, she can, it's falling apart. Toledo just hired two EMTs to be in the station, um, twenty-four seven. And, um, Winlock has people on staff all the time now. Napvile's same, Napvile, I think, has opted out of it. They have their own paramedics. Winlock's same, they've opted out, they have their own param, because it, in the long run, they can't afford to continue to pay the overhead fees for paramedic services long-term. And I know it's been going on for a while, but it's been falling apart for a while. It's been falling apart slowly as the years move on. Um, and so Napvile's out, Winlock's out, Vader doesn't have anybody. Raiderwood, it's got nothing. Everybody's covering Vader and Raiderwood. Toledo is slowly on their way, I believe, to coming up with their own medic option. Um, Napvile has their own medic option. It's falling apart, there's really not a whole lot of South County EMS left. When, as you say, and, and like I said, it was all just paramedic services that were their overhead. And that's what they paid for. Not, and that, and that, that, it was like a commission, everybody had a member on the board. So everybody had to sit at the table and they had, uh, you know, somebody that took care of all that bill and whatnot. But it is falling apart. And another thing I was gonna say was, John was talking about officers, six officers, really, we don't have six officers. We have, I mean, in a car all the time. We have one or two sort of, um, doing this, am I correct? Maybe two at a time max, and then they're doing this sort of, um, you know, like that cartoon where the dogs watch the sheep. How you doing, how you not doing, that kind of thing? So we have six officers, but we have two on for a while, one on, two on, one on. So we're kinda doing this, we don't have, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, we don't have six officers all the time. We have two for a while and we have some officers doing this. Fair or not fair?
Okay, I'll, I'll give you that, however, I will say that that's better than what you're gonna have.
I'm, I'm just clarifying the six officer thing.
You're gonna have more coverage than what it's just two big moments.
I'm just clarifying the six officer thing.
I'm just curious, do you patrol all the way to the freeway in Napvile?
Oh, seventy-two and seventy-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city goes past the freeway to the east, to the west side on, on.
I mean, a huge area to pass.
On the east side.
Yes.
That I'm asking. I would imagine that the majority of your problems come from the freeway.
And then we have the matter of perception one more time, I'm, perception is huge. You could pull somebody over and people see you pulling them over, you don't have to give them a ticket. But they're looking at you like, oh, look, he's got somebody pulled over. They're doing things. They don't have to know you didn't give them a ticket. You sitting there slows them down. It's all about, it's perception. It doesn't have to be, and perception before was, we didn't have anybody. I'm not saying that that's not true when we did the Winlock. I'm not saying that's not true, I'm just saying, if you go out in the public and you know that and you ask, that is perception. That is what the perception was. And that's huge. Perception is a, a lot. I mean, look, they think right now, you know, we have nobody, which isn't true. We do have somebody to respond, you know? And look at the perception, people are walking around, doing whatever they want, so, or that the perception is, we're in trouble, right? I mean, perception's huge. And, and the community's perception is, they want somebody of their own. That's, that's my hard spot. Has nothing to do personally, it's not a, okay. It's, it's, it's all about, you know, what, and how do we afford that later on? South County's a great example. It, it's later on down the road, how are we gonna afford another thirty percent? I mean, yeah, there we go. So, I mean, we can raise some, we can raise rates or we can move money, but we're still creating a Band-Aid that we don't have the money for, and then we're gonna be doing it again to cover this thing and it's a Peter and Paul at that point.
I think you're gonna find that it's very hard to find somebody to cover this city, what you're paying.
But we, if we're only paying one person and paying reserves, we're not gonna be paying two full-time officers. So.
You can only pay reserves, I think, first of all.
Morton does it, how?
I don't agree with what Morton does.
Well, I'm just saying, Morton does it and they have reserves.
The reason why, the reason why I don't agree with that, because if you hire, if you have a reserve that you're paying, and then when it, you wanna hire this person or they go somewhere else to get hired, that time that they have worked the money goes against the time that they have to be cad. So you have six months, six months to put somebody into the cad, right? You hire somebody up the street. So the higher somebody up the street, they've never met a policeman before, you have six months.
I'm sorry, so I get that.
That time starts ticking when you start paying people.
But, but I'm looking, I'm sort of looking at this later on down the road. I know right now we are where we are, but I'm looking at it like later on down the road. I'd like to see us get together and put together, you know, where do we wanna be in two years? Where do we wanna be in three years? And where do we wanna be in five years? So maybe this is what we're doing now, but moving forward, how are we going to come up with, you know, how are we going to hire another officer? Where do we hope to be revenue-wise in two years, looking at our growth? And, and then will we have enough money to hire another officer? Probably, maybe, I would think, hope so. And where will we be in three years? And where will we be in five years? Does that make sense? So, so sitting in this and handing over every penny of our budget and all our resources is. I know, I, I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there. Or I'm sorry, I wanna call you Debbie.
Does me and I agree or disagree? But what I'm hearing very clearly, that you're, you continue to slap the hand that's put out for you, the help. I am absolutely astonished that I'm listening to this. And it just seems like it's an attack, and I'm, what his name is, that they have reached out to help you, rather than what you do in the future, two years, six months, one day, five years. But you continue to slap the hand that stands here trying to help you. I have never, ever been in a group of people and have watched something like this happen in my life. And not once do I hear, John, thank you. Thank you for even extending the olive branch. Thank you for trying to help us. And I got all your points, believe me, I understand what you're saying. But I am telling you, there is no thank you for this olive branch. It is amazing to watch. Amazing, so that's all I'm saying, but I understand all your points, so.
Were you at the last meeting?
No, I was not.
You should have been. Um, I just interrupted then. Going back to perception. I think there's a very wrong perception of how we're discussing the Napvile and how it came to be and the point that we're at now. Because there's been a lot of study, unfortunately. Until now, it didn't include public access. And I think that was a mistake now. But if we just stop on this, that's like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. There is still room to negotiate and we haven't even asked for that yet. Because we can't afford it as it sits, not for five years. I mean, that's just cutting our own throat. So what's left now then is just totally not respond, other than we're done? We thank you, we don't accept. Or here are the points we would still like to negotiate. It, I mean, those are, that's kinda where we are.
We have three options, yeah.
And the third one is.
Is what Shelley has proposed.
But then, we must stop.
Sorry, you're saying that, yeah. Well, at least positive, yes, yes.
We can't continue with this.
Probably not both of them at the same time.
You can't do that, that is, that's not.
But I'm gonna go back and say what, what Donna said too, that we were trying to, in our best interest of all towns, Toledo, trying to get this resolved tonight. The reason being, we wanted to resolve tonight is because we would have for police protection August first. Time is of the essence.